Thank you. This meeting is called to order. Good evening, everybody. We're going to ask everyone to please stand. We're going to salute the flag and then have a moment of silence. I-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Butler?
Yes, you may, Madam President. Ms. Perry?
Present.
Ms. Monroe?
Present.
Ms. Woodfolk?
Present.
Ms. Harris Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Fowler?
Present.
Mrs. Abney, I don't know.
Present.
No, Mrs. Abney, yes, I'm sorry, yes. Don't pay me any mind tonight. Mrs. Washington. And she is on her way. I will mark her in when she arrives. Dr. Winder?
Present.
Mr. DiOrio. Oh, he can't hear me, I'm sorry. Mr. DiOrio, forgive me, I just made the mic live and I'm doing roll call. I'm calling your name, Mr. DiOrio.
Present.
Mr. Butler, present.
We're going to move into, I'm going to request a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any questions on new business items? Any questions on finance items number one?
Mrs. Abney, before you proceed on, I'd like to go over finance item number one.
Okay.
Okay, so finance item number one is a motion to approve the preliminary budget for the 2023-2024 school year. This is part of the Department of Ed's process. This document is preliminary. It is not the final budget. So we still have work to do from this point forward until the board votes on this document at the June legislative meeting. Just going over a couple of things. I've done a number of presentations which are available on the district's website. So what we have in a document, which is the PDE 2024, that document, excuse me, PDE 2028, which is the general fund budget, that will be posted on the district's website for view for the next 30 days until the board, again, votes on this at the June meeting. What that document contains is a budget that has a total revenue amount and expenditures in the amount of $103,240,534. This document also calls for a 2.5% tax increase. Now, so you will see that there is a difference between the total revenue and total expenditures. Couple of reasons for that at this point in time. As I said before, there's a lot of work that we still have to do. For example, I have in this document the revenue for basic ed subsidy is based on the 2022-2023 subsidy. So I did not make the adjustment for what the Department of Ed is saying that we are going to be receiving for the 2023-2024 year. The reason being is that sometimes that number gets adjusted up until the last day of June, and I don't want to put that number in just at this moment and then have to readjust it again. But I did, as I said before, I did put in a 2.5% tax increase. I'll explain that. So last year, two years ago, you know that we had a countywide assessment. So for the 2022-2023 school year, we had an assessed value for all four municipalities in the amount of $1,523,578,17. So part of my analysis is that I look at what has happened during the course of the 2023-2023 school year. And during that course of time, the assessed value increased by $22 million. So now the assessed value for the four municipalities That's an increase of $22,293,359. Then what I do is that I recalculate the mileage from the previous year, from the current year. And that affords, that calculation affords the district another $809,957. So when I say that we're increasing, that I put in an increase of 2.5% on for the 2023-2024 school year, based on those calculations, it amounts to $584,060 to cover the district, just because of those numbers I reviewed. Now, in future presentations, I'll go over these numbers in more detail and there'll be a, there will be a PowerPoint that will lay out what I just reviewed. But again, for the purpose of ensuring that we are in compliance with PDE budget timeline, this document has to be out on the website for no less than 30 days. So we are, it'll be out there for probably 35, 38 days. So that's what this resolution is about. Again, this is not the final budget document. That won't be approved until our June meeting. But this needs to be approved this evening for that purpose. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Are there any public comments regarding the agenda items? Okay. Okay, we're going to move into new business voting. I'm sorry, do I have a motion to approve the finance item number one?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We want to move into the election of Vice President. I'd like to call for nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Cherie Monroe.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. Any other opposed? Okay, motion carries. Motion to elect Ms. Cherie Monroe Whitsett as Vice President of the Southeast Delco School District of School Directors for period from May 18, 2023 through December 4, 2023, commencing immediately. Do I have a second?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. Motion carries. We're moving to the appointment of new school directors. I'd like to- Yes, ma'am.
Madam President.
I'm sorry.
Does the new Vice President take her seat now or?
Sure, why not? At this time, we're going to move to the appointment of new school directors. I'd like to turn things over to Mr. Butler. He's going to initiate candidate introduction and there, explain there are allotted times to speak.
Again, thank you, Madam President. At this time in the meeting, as you know, we have two board seats that are open. So the process for this matter will be that there were individuals who submitted applications of interest for board, to be one of the board members to fill the seat. This seat will be from the square end date until December 4 of 2023 for both positions. So this is a question for the board. So I have, we know that we received online applications and a Google Doc. So I have, it sorted two ways. Timestamp from the date that they submitted their application and also alphabetical. One other piece of information, we have two individuals. I have one on Zoom and then I have a video that was sent via Dropbox. I'm recommending that we do those two individuals first and then go to the list. If that's, if that works for the board. Just to stamp Mrs. Washington in. Okay. All right, so we'll start with Ms. April McNeil. Ms. McNeil, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Hold on a second, I want to just do something with the volume, hold on. And Mrs. Abney, the question is for folks to take time to deliver a message as to why they are a viable option to be on the board. Okay, Ms. McNeil, you're on.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure if I-
Yeah, you're fine. You're on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing, thank you for allowing me to have this time to introduce myself currently. I am away on a work conference, which is why I couldn't be in front of you all today. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of information about myself and why do I believe that I would be a good candidate to join you all on the school board. I am a trauma-informed leader that works in the public health sector, specializing in maternal and child health, early learning education, and family planning. I have worked in these areas for over 15 years. I hold two master's degrees, one in business management and the other in family studies, specializing in program management. I am knowledgeable in federal, state, and local policies, specifically in education, public health, housing, and underserved communities. I believe I can be a liaison from the community that bridges the gap between the board and the community as a whole. As I have witnessed, that I know that there sometimes can be tension amongst what the board and what the community wants. But I believe that I am someone who, on a daily basis, has to navigate these type of concerns. I'm always able to support both sides and play an equal, you know, equal aspect to the situation. Again, I believe with my education, work experience, and passion for my serving community and passion for serving my community, I would be a great asset. What I believe I can bring in automatically right away is using data that I have seen in several of the board meetings, using the data to create change, reviewing and using data to improve equity among schools within the district, student achievement and quality amongst instruction. I believe listening to all aspects who provide for the children with focus groups, with having focus groups with not only just the parents, the children, stakeholders, and admin, and using that information, again, to come up with creative solutions to make change. I also believe working with effective and evidence-based resources within a community to create opportunities to support the Southeast Delco as a whole. And what I extremely mean by that is just using scholarly articles, research that has been proven in communities that are similar to ours across this country and ways that it can make for better outcomes. I can bring my experience of looking for different funding streams to support areas where there are deficits, such as professional development and/or student resources, as well as taking on or recruiting quality teachers and admin staff. I also believe in research and I believe that the research has shown in our, across this country, that effective school boards are successful when everyone knows their role and how they contribute to the success of students.
Okay, Mrs. McNeil.
And not to say that-
I'm sorry, that-
Am I at my three minutes?
Yeah, you're at your three minutes.
All right. Well, that was the main thing, and I appreciate you giving me this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is one other statement I forgot to make earlier. I did use my phone this time to do that because I forgot that I mounted a timer on the wall so that folks can see what their time span will look like or how much time they have left over. So I very quickly did it here because I forgot to do it on the wall. Okay. The next is- Bear with me here. I wouldn't have to share the screen, I just want to collapse it. Oh, that's what I want to do.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry, folks.
No problem.
Okay, so the next is Ms. Barley, Francesca Barley, and she has a video that we're going to view.
Hi, everybody, this is Francesca Barley. I'm checking in from Paris, France. I'm really sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but I thought it was really important that I spoke.
Hold on a second. Hold on.
I'll pause this.
Hi, everybody, this is Francesca Barley.
Okay, let me just do this.
Hi, everybody, this is Francesca Barley. I'm checking in from Paris, France. I'm really sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but I thought it was really important that I spoke on my behalf for a reason I wanted a school board seat that is currently vacant. I want you to know a little bit about myself. I graduated from St. Joseph's University in 2004 with a degree in sociology and moved on to get my master's degree in 2007 with a degree in criminal justice. I've worked in youth mental health since 2007, and I'm currently the Youth Mental Health and Behavioral Health Liaison for the Student Assistance Program. I currently am in board Delaware County Schools Districts as well as local archdiocese schools. I provide mental health resources and work with parents on mental health services. I help with paperwork and expedite the process. As a youth mental health advocate, I'm dedicated to the social-emotional learning of children and providing paths for them to be successful. I have been an advocate for the kids in our district to have more and better opportunities. Last year, I helped organize the Young Democrats Club at Academy Park. The Young Democrats Club organizes voter drives and educates students on upcoming elections. I have sat on the board of the Darby Township Home and School as treasurer for over five years, and recently I have taken the same role on at Academy Park High School. I have recently joined forces with my own sophomore to help create the Wellness Club. The club is about finding ways for students to steady their minds. The club focuses on journaling, meditation, and yoga. I'm also the creator and the administrator of the Academy Park Parents Facebook page. I saw a need for information to be distributed in a timely manner. This is currently my second year running the page. I'm the mother of two powerful daughters. My oldest is at Academy Park, she's a sophomore, and my youngest is a seventh grader at Darby Township School. There aren't many school events where you won't find me. I chaperone dances. I decorate for Black History Month. I organize school events. I raise funds for staff and appreciation days. I'm a continuous volunteer in the school buildings. I provide crucial support for district teachers and administrators. I believe I would be a resource and a benefit for the entire district if elected to the Southeast Delco School Board. My knowledge of youth mental health needs and enthusiastic involvement in the schools would make me a valuable asset to our community and to our children. Thanks so much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Barley.
Okay, so now we're going to the list timestamp. The next person, some of the names, I will read the address, and I apologize for mispronouncing someone else's, a person's last name. So this is Beatty, 16 Lawton Terrace.
Can you say the name again?
Last name is Beatty, B-A-D-E-Y, 16 Lawton Terrace. And it doesn't have a- Yeah, William, oh, I'm sorry, William. Okay. Next individual is Percy Fields, 427 Garfield Avenue. Next person, last name spelled G-U-I-H-I-A, 325 Spruce Street, Glen Alden. We just heard from Ms. Barley. Next individual is Michelle McGowan, 421 Clifton Avenue.
Okay, I was waiting for you.
No, wait a minute, let me just make sure. This new technology is challenging me tonight.
You should let me help you.
All right, you could start, and I'll start it again.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Michelle McGowan, and I am a- I was born and raised in Darby Township and now currently live in Sharon Hill. I have spent all of my formative years in the Southeast Delco School District, and I'm a proud alumni class of '96. I've married my high school sweetheart, and he was also, he is also a graduate of Academy Park, having received all of his education through Southeast Delco. We have four children who have all received their education through Southeast Delco. I've been a proud volunteer for the DCIU for over 20 years, before I became a proud volunteer for the Southeast Delco School District. I am still a, I'm a fixture at the musical, I'm a fixture at a lot of events around there. I volunteer on every committee that I'm asked. And I have realized that in order to be a part of special education, you need to be a part of special education in order to understand it and to be an advocate for your child. Therefore, I began my quest to become an advocate for special education in the fact that I sit on many committees, I follow lots of research, I continuously ask the questions and advocate for our children. Our children, we have two children that have autism, one child has, is gifted. Therefore, their needs were very complex, and I needed to educate myself accordingly. I have assisted others throughout their journey through the special education system and continue to be an advocate for parental involvement and education resources. I frequently seek out those opportunities and share that information with others, and will continue to do so no matter what. I am also a big proponent on communication. I believe that what our district and our community desperately needs is better communication. My biggest push is the hope to combine the community with the district in the fact that there are many things that are going on within our district that is not getting out there. There, we're not getting the resources that need to be obtained because no one knows what we're doing. And then we've got things that are going on in the community that would affect our students and our families, and we don't know about that because it's not being communicated properly. Therefore, I, using my background in IT, I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to begin to work on the website, working on perhaps bringing in an app. Apps are not expensive anymore, to create an app designed to help communication needs within our district, which would allow parents to connect with teachers, to connect with resources, and to connect with the community as a whole. I believe in unification. I believe in working with one another to try to achieve the best outcome possible. And I believe that I would be an amazing asset to this board. And I'm a fixture here at the board meetings. I understand your plight and your struggles, and I want to be an asset and help. That's all.
Okay, the next person is Patricia Noel, 920 Marshall Road. We have Nicole Woodard, 620 South Garfield Avenue. We have Renee Caraballo, 1823 Cricket Lane, Paul Crow. Next, we have Mary Carter, 18 Felton Avenue.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Mary Charlene Carter. In the workforce, I'm known as Charlene Carter. I've been out here in the education field for over 45 years. I started out with head start was considered get set. That's how long I've started with education. That's how long I've started with education. Throughout that time, I've had the, the opportunity to be a director, a teacher, a special needs teacher, a advocate for children. I work for DVC. I train for the National Association for the Education of Young Children. I'm also one of the co-founders of the National Black Child Development Institution. I've written proposals and grants. I introduced the pre-K camp grant to Delaware County. I created the first partnership in Delaware County with a Head Start program and with the DCIU. I work very closely with Renee Bell, Aneesh, Aneesh Gordon. I've also had the opportunity to do a lot of research. So I committed, I, I did a lot of community needs assessment, family needs assessment, children needs assessment. I've also am the first, I am the one who committed and developed the first community science fair in Philadelphia. I also committed, was the first one who developed a, a Please Touch Museum Play Theory in Philadelphia. I've also am the one who did what they call a one-woman job fair in Philadelphia. I'm also the one who, who, I am very visionary. So what I did was, I opened up a shelter for homeless women and women with children, and I ran that shelter for ten years. In that opportunity of having children and, and women who were homeless, I got an opportunity to, to be, work with all type of people. People who were diagnosed with all type, type of diseases. I am also a recipient of a person who was special needs. I was deaf for two years. For two years of my life, I could not hear. Then I became an advocate for special needs because I believe that all children can learn. No child is born that they cannot learn. You have to find a way to get to them. It, it's not hard. You also have to work with families. You also have to be a team player in order to make education work. It's a hands and gloves situation. Right now, what I do with all the experience I have, so I am also a crisis intervention specialist with Mr. Correa Hospital. I work as a drug and alcohol counselor for Presbyterian Hospital. I am a chaplain for universities, uni, for university hospital. When I put all those heads together, I became a minister. So now I'm a minister, and I'm what they call a street minister. I, I belong to a church, but my, my work is working with people. I consider myself a humanitarian person. When I, when I look at all the things that I see that's going on out here, I know that changes can happen.
Mrs. Carter, your, your time has expired. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next individual is William Jackson, seven thirteen Sharon Avenue. Next individual, Amanda Mosley, fifteen Bayer Avenue.
Good evening. I'll be very brief, I'm nervous. But my name is Amanda Mosley. I'm a longtime resident of Delaware County. Honestly, I believe one of my best qualifications here is that I'm a mother. I'm a mother of a former Southeast Delco student, I'm a mother of a current Southeast Delco student, and I'm a mother of a future Southeast Delco student, as well as countless other children in the community. Professionally, I have a bachelor's degree in psychology from Newman University. I have over fifteen years working with children and families, fifteen-plus years working with children and family in the community in Philadelphia County, Newcastle County, and Delaware County. I previously sat on a board of directors for a small nonprofit in Newcastle County called Sever Inc., and I also have a certification in direct care from the Department of Human Services in Philadelphia. I currently work for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and I have the ability to interpret policy. I have countless hours of training in various areas such as crisis intervention, motivational interviewing, mental health counseling. But honestly, I'm just here today, I don't expect to get elected, but I was just kind of here because this is my first step at trying to get involved, trying to come out to the meetings and trying to see how I can be a part of the solution.
A question, Mr. Butler, regarding Ms. Hayward. Did you, did you...
I don't, I don't...
Just want to make sure she's still on the list. She's next up, she's next up.
Oh, she's, okay. Okay, this is fine. Damala Hayward, nine zero seven Andrews Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this, this opportunity to speak, and you guys did an amazing job pronouncing my name on the first try. I often get the mola. So, my kids are young, three and seven. My seven-year-old attends Harris, and this year I have just been more, trying to get more involved in school activities and things like that within the community. I have been a resident in Collendale for eight years now because I was pregnant with the one who's at Harris. My background is, I have my doctorate in social work, my master's in social work, my doc, my bachelor's in social work. I have worked mostly in either child welfare or mental and behavioral health, but specifically in schools. Currently, I work in a high school in Kensington in Philadelphia as a clinical coordinator, AKA just a therapist. I'm a team player, very creative, and I think outside of the box. And I believe in the foundation of everything is building relationships, especially with the youth that I do work with. I have extensive training in, of course, behavioral health and mental health, but also restorative practices and things like that that have been beneficial to a lot of schools, especially high schools. I won't say that's it for right now. So, thank you. Even if I'm not elected, I will be at more board meetings as well, so, see you around.
Yes, that's the next person. I'm doing, I'm doing it by application, submission. Unless I have a different... Okay, the next person is Ms. McMillan, McMillian, fifty-three, excuse me, fifty-nine thirty-four Ellsworth Street.
Stephanie McMillan?
Well, I was going to say Ellsworth is, that's Philadelphia. Okay.
Sorry, that's all right.
Next is Mr. Jack, four zero two Crozer Avenue, Alkro.
Hi, everyone. So, I had this big plan to get home in time to get a little speech ready and everything. And then when I got home, my son was at the door acting all anxious and everything. I'm like, what are you doing? And he was watching something on the television, and I'm like, what were you watching? So we went through this whole thing, and then I decided to take a walk for him like four blocks. And then by the time I was done, it was five-thirty. So here I am without a speech. But that's okay because it seems like things aren't going well over here either. So, I think, um, I think it's, it's good. Um, so, uh, so I think, I think...
We will talk after this meeting.
Yeah, yeah. We will. So, so forgive me, but maybe, maybe I'll start with my experience. So professionally, they call me Dr. Jack. I have a doctorate in educational leadership. I'm a school administrator, and I have about fifteen years in education. And I started off as an ESL teacher, and, you know, I love languages and culture. I myself am from, originally from the Caribbean, Trinidad and Tobago. And I have about three family members who went through. I had a niece who went through. She graduated, and now I have two younger kids, a twelve-year-old and a five-year-old coming up. And, you know, of course, you, you wanna, you wanna be, you wanna sort of effect change, you wanna sort of be a part of solutions when you see things. I had no, I, I didn't have an interest in the school board, but after coming to a number of meetings and having some experiences myself with my kids in the district, I thought maybe I can help and be a part of the solution. And so that's, that's my motivation for, for being here. I think a large school district like this is not unlike school districts I've worked in. I would think, if you know about Camden, then certainly, and so I see there, there are always opportunities in education for change. I would like to be a part of that change, and so that's, that's in a nutshell why I'm here. I also volunteer for the Southeast Delco Immigration Coalition. I actually, we have a meeting tonight at six, so I was like, this meeting, that meeting, and they're also voting there too. So if I don't win here, I'm also losing there, so man, it's a tough night. So, it's, it's just how my day's been going. So, um, so, you know, whatever it is, um, you know. So, and I'm also an immigrant for the Association of Mid-Level Educators, which is a sort of like a, a national global educational group that supports middle school learners. I believe I can be an asset to the board. I am very invested in the school district. My kids go here, and I'm very invested in their lives. So I took a four-lap walk today with my son. And so hopefully, you know, if, if what I've said tonight impresses you all, then I'm sorry, Mr. Butler, but, you know, I'll be happy to be a part of the committee. Thanks.
Okay, the next person is Shannon Griffin, one twenty-seven Rees Street. All right. Next person is Michelle Lawson, eight zero seven Clifton Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Lawson, and I live in Sharon Hill. I have two children who currently attend Academy Park High School. I am a registered nurse. I work in risk management, drug and alcohol, and mental health. I also have a bachelor's degree in business administration. In a previous position, I was elected twice as the president of AFSMI Local Union twenty-three oh five. I understand the importance of developing relationships and having good, strong negotiating skills. I believe that the school board is a fiduciary who steers the school district towards sustainable futures, adopting sound ethical and financial management policies. I believe that would be an asset because I'm dependable, kind, a good listener, and I'm also willing to work hard to put our heads together and come up with solutions for some of the issues we're having. Thank you for your time, and good luck to the rest of the candidates.
Okay, the next person is Mohammed Duculay, Duculi. That is nine twenty-two Grant Road. Next is, bear with me. Next is Sheila, Sheila Carter, ten fifteen Elmwood Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Sheila A. Carter, and I am a resident of Sharon Hill Borough for the last thirty-one years, but I grew up at Darby Township. I have spent my whole time in Southeast Delco. I'm a graduate of Darby Township High School, and I have two children also that attended Sharon Hill School. My daughter has a master's, which I'm very excited about. I'm excited for my son too because he works full-time, so he's self-sufficient. But I've spent my whole time here in Delaware County. And as a young girl coming up through Southeast Delco, when I first went off to college, I spent two years at Cal U, decided I wanted to come home, and I came home and went to DCIU Police Academy. So I was able to become the first female police officer for Darby Township. And during that time, I went back to school, got my social degree in criminal justice. I also have a bachelor's in liberal studies, and I have a master's degree in public administration. During my time in Delaware County, I have spent a lot of time, community development, community relations, being involved with the community. I have spent fourteen years with DCIU. I started DCIU as a teen parent counselor, and the goal of that was to keep high school girls into high school. And that allowed me to be in Southeast Delco William Penner Really School District. During that time, before I retired, I was in Head Start, so that allowed me to work with the little ones. So during my time that my children were in school, we started our homeless, we had our homeschool program, but it wasn't active, and myself and another parent started it up. And what we did was, we did four-H, and we also had parent night meetings where my friend loved to cook. So we would bring the parents and the children together and have meals, and because what I found, and also, I'm six, I was six years on Southeast Delco School Board, so I'm very knowledgeable of the school system, policy, procedures, and things like that. So I'm very knowledgeable of the school system, policy, procedures, and things like that. And I spent one year as vice president, and congratulations, Ms. Monroe, as the vice president for Southeast Delco. But during that time, what I found is relationship and communication is key. It's key with our children because if I am given the opportunity to go back on the board, one of the things I want to concentrate on is teacher retention because I think it's so important to have teachers that stay with our district because it allows our kids to develop relationships. And also because of my prior experience as a police officer and having a degree in criminal justice, safety and security is very important. It's not enough for us to send our kids to school nowadays because we hear about mass shootings and things like that. We have to have policies and procedures in place so that the kids are, feel safe going to school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.
Okay, the next person is Clara Hill Dean, 325 Westmont.
Good evening. I am Clara Hill Dean. I have lived within the Southeast Delco School System for 14 years. I have a master's degree in social work from Temple University. I work with the borough's community and I have mental health experience. I worked for Delaware County for six years. My first child graduated from Harris School and went on to Penn State and recently graduated with an engineer degree. My youngest child is currently enrolled within the Southeast Delco School System. Being on the school, being on the Southeast Delco School Bowl would give me an opportunity to work with my colleagues, to have a direct impact and continue to improve the well-being of our school system. I am glad to have the opportunity before me to be able to serve on the school board. I am therefore asking for this opportunity to serve on the Southeast Delco School Board. And thank you for having me here this evening.
Okay, the next person is Tatiana Hooper, 806 Taylor Drive. Next person, Jemisha Rogers, 625 Trippet. Oh, sorry. Next individual, Amir Mohammed. Next, Melissa Hunter, 701 Clifton Avenue. Leah Jayward, Sharon Avenue, Sharon Hill. Josephine Williams, 141 Laurel Road. Armando Camara. Teddy Bromé, 786 Bennington Road. Tanisha Robinson, 1023 Taylor Drive. Antoinette Bogan, 1117 Spring Street. And that concludes my list. I did notice that there was one individual who came to the front door. Would that be William Beatty? The gentleman in the back? What is your name? Oh, you're just observing? Oh, okay, I apologize. I thought you were, you were on the list. Thank you. Okay, did we miss anyone in the audience that had submitted an application?
For double checking. All right, we're going to call for nominations for school board director. This is for vacancy one.
I'd like to nominate Francesca Barley.
Hold on.
Why write these names down?
And Ms. Barley has a second.
That was, the motion was Perry. I got it. And the second was Ms. Woodfolk.
But of course, no second is necessary. It's not prohibited, but, but someone can be nominated even if there's no second.
Are there any other nominations for the first vacancy? Oh, your mic.
I would like to nominate, can I do one or two? Just do one at a time? Okay, I'd like to list my two nominations, Dr. Jack and Ms. April McNeil.
Okay, hold on a second. You said Dr. Jack? Oh, Roger. Okay.
Are there any other, another, go ahead.
No, you're fine.
Are there any other nominations for the first vacancy?
I would like to nominate Damala Hayward.
Can you say the name again, Mr. Fowler?
Damala Hayward, I'm sorry. I can butcher her name.
Thank you. Okay, before we close the motions, was there any? Okay.
Now, just one other thing. I'd just like to mention, just, okay, so the order of the voting will be the order of the nominations. So we'll do Francesca Barley first, Roger Jack second, April McNeil, and Damala Hayward. In that order.
Okay, you all, we are closing the nominations for vacancy one for school board director. Okay. Mr. Butler, let's do a roll call vote for the candidates for vacancy one, please.
Okay, so the first person is Francesca Barley. Ms. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Monroe.
Yes.
Ms. Woodfolk.
Yes.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
No.
Mr. Fowler.
No.
Mrs. Washington.
No.
Mrs. Abney.
No.
Okay, that fails. So I, Bob, I'll move on to the next person? So the next person is Roger Jack. Roll call vote. Ms. Perry.
No.
Ms. Monroe. Yes, Roger Jack.
Yes.
Ms. Woodfolk.
No.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Abney.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. So the individual selected to fill vacancy one is Mr. Roger Jack, or Doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. Roger Jack. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Congratulations, Ms., Dr. Jack. We're going to move to election of the school board director for the second vacancy. Michelle McGowan. Hold on. Okay. Mr. Butler, we'll, we'll do the same thing. We'll have a roll call. Thank you.
I'd like to nominate, I'd like to nominate Ms. April McNeil.
Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate, oh, shucks. No.
No, go ahead, take your time.
No, 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 it's, I was going to nominate April McNeil, but she's on. She has been, so it's okay, nominated.
Thank you.
Oh, how about Mr. April Hayward?
And I'm doing Damala Hayward.
Okay, so that's three. Dr. Damala Hayward, Ms. April McNeil, and Mrs. Michelle McGowan.
Right.
Okay.
And they will go in the reverse order. Okay. We should have a motion, a second to vote on.
So move. Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, roll call vote. This is for Michelle McGowan. Ms. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Monroe.
Yes.
Ms. Woodfolk.
Yes.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
No.
Mr. Fowler.
No.
Mrs. Washington.
No.
Mrs. Abney.
No.
Okay, that failed. Next person, roll call vote for April McNeil. Ms. Perry.
No.
Ms. Monroe.
No.
Ms. Woodfolk.
No.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler.
No.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Abney.
Yes.
Okay, that fails. Next individual will be Damala Hayward. Ms. Perry.
No.
Mrs., Ms. Monroe.
No.
Ms. Woodfolk.
No.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
No.
Mrs. Abney.
Yes.
It fails. Okay, so we'll start over again. Okay, so just give me a minute.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
There can also be additional nominations if the board would like to make additional nominations for this position, since you're voting all over again, so you're starting out fresh. In other words, keep, you can keep the ones that are nominated, but either, well, the board, I guess the board can make a decision. Either open up the floor for all new nominations, which means those folks that were nominated can be renominated or different folks also be nominated. Or the board can decide just to keep on voting for the four that were, were nominated for the second position.
But my question is, why should we keep on voting if nobody's not willing to change their mind? It's still going to be the same thing.
But you, you don't know that, you don't know that in, when you're voting again.
Okay, all right.
Would, would anyone like to make an additional nomination? Okay.
In addition to Michelle McGowan, I'd like to nominate Francesca Barley.
Would anybody, any additional? Okay, we're ready for roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson.
We still are voting on those.
Yes, ma'am.
And the addition is Ms. Barley. Okay, starting with Ms. Michelle, Mrs. McGowan. It will be, we'll start with Ms. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Monroe.
Yes.
Ms. Woodfolk.
Yes.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
No.
Mr. Fowler.
No.
Mrs. Washington.
No.
Mrs. Abney.
No.
Okay, we'll move to the next, April McNeil. Ms. Perry.
No.
Ms. Monroe.
No.
Ms. Woodfolk.
No.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler.
No.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes.
Mrs. Abney.
Yes.
Okay, that fails. Next is Dr. Hayward. Ms. Perry.
My vote is yes, Mr. Butler. Sorry, my vote is no. Damala Hayward, is that where we are?
Yes.
No.
Ms. Monroe.
No.
Ms. Woodfolk.
No.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mrs. Washington.
No.
Mrs. Abney.
Yes.
Next person that fails will be Francesca Barley. Ms. Perry.
Yes.
Ms. Monroe.
Yes.
Ms. Woodfolk.
Yes.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
No.
Mr. Fowler.
No.
Mrs. Washington.
No.
Mrs. Abney.
No.
Okay, that fails as well.
Could I make a comment before we vote again?
Yes.
So just before we vote again, I'd like the board to consider that of everyone we heard from this evening, Mrs. McGowan and Mrs. Barley are the only applicants this evening who have already ran for school board and invested the last couple of months in working to get onto the board. And the Democratic primary- to get onto the board, and the Democratic primary has proven that, um, there's a pretty good chance they're coming to join us in December, and, um, only one other person out of the entire eleven Democrats that ran received more votes than them. So, I, I do think it's important that we listen to the public and the voters, and they chose Mrs. McGowan and Mrs. Barley on Tuesday. So I do think it's important that we consider their applications this evening.
But the constituents voted on them as candidates to be, uh, to come on in December 2023. We're here to complete the positions of those people who resigned. So, um, I understand what you're saying, but at this point, um, I don't think that's something that we should consider, for them to come on from now until December.
No, let's move on. Excuse me, Mr. Butler, I would like to know what your question is. Put your mic on, please.
Are there any current board members on the board that, before they were elected to the actual office, they were appointed by the board to a vacancy?
Could you say the question again?
Are there any board members currently sitting on the board that were appointed to a vacancy before they were elected in November?
Yes. Ms. Perry and Mrs. Washington.
No, I was elected. And Mrs. Washington's not rerunning, so she won't be elected. But weren't you appointed before?
No, your, your, your question, right, Mrs. Washington was appointed.
I'm asking if they were appointed before an actual, like, she's not going to be elected, she didn't run. I'm asking if there's a current board member who was appointed and completed someone's term and then filled a term.
So, to answer your question.
Were you not appointed, weren't you appointed to the board?
Is that your question?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just asking because Mrs. Harris Johnson shared as though that that shouldn't be something that we consider, but I feel like the board in the past has considered that, and I think as a board, we've already proven a few times that we don't listen to the public, and I do think the votes on Tuesday showed what the residents are asking us to do, and we should highly consider what the public wants.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you for your, right. So we're gonna go ahead and vote, or we can, um, have more nominations. Would any of, um, the board members like to consider other nominees? Can you give us a minute, please? Bear with us.
Madam President, um, I'm asking for a motion to recess for five minutes, and so that the board can go in the back and have a discussion.
Are there any, um, all in favor?
We need a second.
Yes, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed to taking a recess? Okay, great, let's take a recess. We'll be back in a few minutes, thank you. Feel free to take a recess as well.
Yeah, come on, you two. Say it again. Yeah, that's my question.